The Town of Andrew Planning Board meeting. We can go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come humbly before you and ask that you bless all who are here tonight. Please keep them safe. We ask, Lord, that you would lead, guide, and direct us this evening to do our best to be in service to you and our community. We pray, Lord, that you and everything that we can do would glorify you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Has everyone been able to take a look at the minutes? The July 12th meeting? Any questions, any concerns, any changes? Can I get a motion to go ahead and Lee makes the motion, all in favor say aye? Has everybody looked over the agenda for this evening? Thank you. Roberts made the motion, all in favor say aye? Unanimous, Sean, it's yours.
Good evening, Board. We have two new rezoning requests on tonight's agenda for your consideration. First, I'll turn your attention to the staff report for the Meritage Homes rezoning application. Their submittal is for a piece of property located off of Old Boys Creek Road. Vicinity map on the screen on page one of your staff report, you'll see the property in question's roughly 48 acres located on Old Boys Creek Road. This is directly south of the Windsor subdivision. As you can see where the red arrow is pointed on the map. For reference, this is directly across Old Boys Creek Road from the previously approved Meritage Homes home project. If you remember, the Easely Properties tract right behind the Pope and Pope Law Firm office between Old Boys Creek and 55. This will be directly across Old Boys Creek from that project. That property is currently zoned RA 30 and the request for consideration tonight is the conditional R6 zoning district. Page two of your staff report, on that back page there, you'll see a screenshot of the zoning map with the red arrow pointed to the properties in question. These two parcels here and here, that dark yellow orangish color on your map, that's the RA 30 zoning district. As you can see, that easily tracked, I mentioned across Old Boys Creek Road, previously zoned conditional R6 with a single-family subdivision a couple of months back. The submittal tonight is also conditional R6. The P in the permitted use box beside single-family signifies that the only use proposed will be single-family in this rezoning subdivision submittal. As you can see, the main difference between the current zoning and the proposed zoning is that reduction in minimum lot size from 30,000 square feet down to 6,000 square feet. The map on page three of your staff report, excuse me, bottom of page two, this is an aerial photograph from 2021 with some reference of the surrounding developments here. The red arrow is pointed to the 48 acres in question. The easily tracked across the street is called Williams Pond subdivision. On the other side of 55, the previously approved Vaughn Farm subdivision. North of that is Cambridge on 55, the west side of Old Boys Creek is Windsor. West of Windsor, we know we have Clearfield on Roy Adams Road. Just a couple of months back, the Dupree Farms subdivision, also a conditional R6 subdivision, was approved. And south of Dupree Farms is Myrtle Manor, approved a few months back, which is a pod mixture of towns and singles on Gardner Road. So this is just to show the Board a reminder of all the surrounding developments, both existing and previously approved and not yet under construction. So this new project will be kind of nestled in the middle, just south of the Windsor subdivision here. It does have quite a bit of frontage on Old Boys Creek Road. Surrounding land uses include medium-density residential as well as some existing agricultural uses. Do you mind turning off this message here? The developer will be required to extend Town of Andrew water and sewer to serve the property. And it will be accessed by Old Boys Creek Road. If you turn to page four of your rezoning staff report, you'll see our land use classification compatibility chart we always use when considering a change to our zoning map. I apologize for those in the audience that can't see it on the screen here. Board members, your staff report in front of you shows two different colors on the parcels in question. The dark yellow is medium-density residential, the lighter yellow is low-density residential. So it kind of straddles the classifications on our land use map here. The conditional R6 subdivision proposed will include a mixture of 6,000 and 10,000 square foot lots, which we will get into in a second. I do want to make sure the Board's aware of the proposed overall density is about 2.8 units per acre, which does fall on the low-end side of your medium-density residential land use classification. My staff evaluation is on page four of your staff report. I will read through that quickly. Number one says the impact to adjacent property owners and the surrounding community is reasonable and the benefits of the rezoning outweigh any potential inconvenience or harm to the community. Staff concludes yes, with appropriate conditions, the requested zoning would allow for an appropriate density of residential uses that are compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. Number two, the requested zoning district is compatible with the land use classification. Yes, as we just discussed, 2.8 units an acres is well within the reasonable range for low and medium-density residential. Number three, the proposal does enhance, maintain, public health, safety, and welfare. Yes, with appropriate conditions again, which we'll get into. The requested zoning would allow for compatible uses with the surrounding neighborhoods. And no, it's not a small-scale rezoning. Number four, we know that we have multiple conditional R6 subdivisions with similar overall densities approved just in the last few months. It is for those reasons that staff recommends approval of the conditional R6 rezoning before you. And I will direct your attention to the eight and a half by 11 copy of the Meritage Homes submittal of what they're calling Gardner Farms subdivision. There we go. You should have both a site plan colored copy on one side of the page and a colored rendering on the backside of the page. I'm going to hit the highlights of what's proposed in that site plan and we'll allow the applicants to do a presentation in a Q and A session afterwards. Like I said, overall density for this proposal, 2.8 units an acre. It is exclusively single-family lots. There is a mixture of 6,000 square foot lots, that darker tan color on the map, and 10,000 square foot lots, that lighter yellow color on the map. Do want to point out that we have had a couple of conversations staff has had with the applicants requesting additions and subtractions to the proposed subdivision plan based on what we heard from the community in our previous public hearings for similar rezoning submittals. Based on what the commissioners have approved previously and what conditions were placed on those plans previously, have been mirrored in many ways on this proposal. Those 10,000 square foot lots, as you can see, they align the entire, it'll be the northern portion of this tract adjacent to the southern edge of the Windsor subdivision, which we know is currently zoned R10. With those 6,000, excuse me, 6,000 square foot lots, the 50-foot wide product towards the southern edge of the proposed subdivision, further away from Windsor. There is two subdivision entrances on Old Boys Creek Road. Did want to point out, there is existing homes kind of in the middle, which will be carved out of the larger 40-acre tract, 48-acre tract, that is the Gardner family's home place here in the middle. The other sheet that I handed each board member is a list of those conditions that will be included in the zoning district if approved. I'm going to run through items one through 16 here. Please stop me if you have any questions about these conditions. Number one says the parcel in question shall only be developed with single-family lots. Number two, there shall be no more than 136 total lots on the parcels in question. In the case of a reduction in the total lot count based on unforeseen design constraints, the planning director may approve a reduction, minor adjustment to the proposed subdivision plan. Number three, the minimum lot size shall be at least 6,000 square feet. Number four, there shall be at least 45 lots greater than or equal to 10,000 square feet. Number five, the minimum lot width shall be 50 feet. Six, the minimum building setback shall be as required in the R6 district. Number seven, there shall be a southbound right turn lane installed to serve each development access on Old Boys Creek Road. These improvements will be installed per DOT standards prior to the recordation of any lots on this subdivision plan. Number eight, in addition to the turn lanes described in condition number seven, any improvements recommended by the traffic impact analysis shall be installed. Number nine, there should be a minimum of 12 acres of open space dedicated in the proposed subdivision. I believe the subdivision plan before you has 12.7 acres, which comes out of 27% open space dedication. As we know, the ordinance requires 20, so they have exceeded that standard. Number 10, there will be a 20-foot wide vegetative buffer provided along Old Boys Creek Road, which should be installed per ordinance standards. Number 11, where the 70-foot wide lots, that's the R10 lots, are located within 20 feet of the western and northern property lines, a 20-foot vegetative buffer will be provided. Number 12, where the 50-foot wide lots, that's the R6 lots, are located within 15 feet of the eastern and southern property lines, a 15-foot wide vegetative buffer will be provided. Number 13, turn to the back of your page there. The property shall be developed with two or more of the following amenities: pedestrian walkways, benches, gazebo or shade structure, play structure, play lawn, and pet waste stations. They will have, I believe, 4.7 acres of their 12 acres as active recreational open space. Number 14, there will be curb and gutter and five-foot sidewalk installed throughout the proposed subdivision on both sides of each new street. And number 14, there shall also be curb, gutter, and sidewalk installed along the Old Boys Creek Road frontage. And number 16, because we heard this at our last public hearing, developers shall incorporate crape myrtle trees near the entrances to the proposed subdivision. Does the Board have any questions about these 16 conditions? Or do you see any conditions that you believe need to be added?
Sean, looking at this plan though, along the buffer there on Old Boys Creek and talking about the last time we had the public hearing, I can see that there's crape myrtles on one side of the entrance, not on both sides of the entrance. A little uniformity would be nice in that.
I added comment number 16 after they submitted this.
I'm just saying, you know, I'm just looking at the picture and going back and I'm thinking that that's going to be somewhere other here or with the commissioners, it's going to be approached. You know, it's just some uniformity. Just going back again, you know, we are the town of crape myrtles and it's pretty sad when Fuquay's outdoing us with the crape myrtles. Can I ask where exactly on this, I know that you're saying in the green area. In number 13, the pedestrian walkways, I'm not, you know, maybe it's me, but I'm not really seeing walkways other than, that's what I was wondering if that's, is that the walking trail, the little brown?
A little tricky to see on the plan here. There's a small brown trail.
Okay, that's, so that is it?
Kind of goes up between the R6 and R10 lots.
All right, that's the walking trail.
These properties will not quite get you to Roy Adams. Those lots in the very back of the Windsor subdivision are actually between these parcels and Roy Adams. So it would be the next developer to, I guess it's the west of this project that would continue the street. Meritage Homes has provided a street stub to the southern property. The property right here yet to be developed. And if they develop, they would of course stub west back towards Roy Adams if that's a feasible crossing.
Any else have any other questions? So this little square area right behind Mr. Daniels Farm right here, there's no, there's not going to be any buffer back behind his his house. How is that playing out for his farm? Okay. Okay, awesome, thank you. Is everybody else good?
We do have a representative from American Engineering who has a PowerPoint. He'd like to proceed.
I'm going to be very brief because I've done such a good job already. Anything I say might mess it up, so. Well, as that's getting started, let me just say thank you for letting us be here today and I'm excited about this. My name is Scott Stone. I'm with American Engineering. So we get to, should I talk in the mic or can it my?
Yeah, please do.
So we get to work on a lot of different projects like this, but what I've found is that they're all a little bit different. And the one thing about them that's kind of interesting is that there's a story behind every one of them usually. There's usually not just some random plot of land and some random developer or builder and so forth. So what's exciting about this for me is the history of this and the Gardner family. Just like across the street, this is a very similar subdivision to Easily Park across the street. And they were very concerned when they were getting ready to sell their property that they sold it to a developer and a builder who was going to do right by the family. Well, the gardeners felt the same way because actually they were related, they're cousins, and they watched their cousins deal with Meritage and going through the design process and they wanted to make sure that this property and this project did the same thing. It honored their families and their legacy and created a product and a neighborhood and a community that really was fitting of the name that it's going to have. This is not Easily Park Phase 2, this is Gardner Farms, because it is going to be something that's going to honor the Gardner family. And we, you know, we don't even need a PowerPoint necessarily because it's, if it's slow to pull up because we could just speak to this if need be. Okay, wow, must have a lock on it or something. Well, so what I'll do a little bit is there's not a lot more that I can add that Sean didn't already add. But when this plan was put together, we learned from our recent experiences by making sure we had two different building types. That was important for the community and so we, you know, we learned from, we're coachable from the last one. So this is, you know, it was important to have that transition period. You've got, you've got the housing here that's going to have the larger lots, 70-foot wide lots and the 10,000 square foot lots in transitioning to the smaller lots and more dense as you go, as you go south, actually. It feels like east, but it's south. And the 20-foot buffers on the, on this side and the 15-foot on the other side. So it's, we're excited about all the different amenities that we can have in this and all the different attributes of it. The stormwater ponds are here and here, and this is an existing pond here. And we don't know exactly what amenities are going to go where, but we've got a lot of flexibility by the open spaces that exist kind of in these big green areas. So we're kind of playing with the idea of having one there and maybe either one in the front or one back here. There's just a lot of different options for what we could do to help create a, you know, a really nice neighborhood, nice community that's going to be welcoming and have a lot of activities on it for the residents. So as you can see here, I think Sean already kind of mentioned, it is hard to see, but that walking trail there kind of goes up through the middle. You covered just about everything, so the best thing for me to do is to stop talking and just see if there's any additional questions, which there may not be.
If this does get approved, when are we looking at construction starting? All right, let's go ahead and look at our standards of review. The planning board shall consider and make recommendations to the Town Board of Commissioners concerning this proposed conditional zoning district. The following policy guidelines shall be followed by the planning board concerning zoning districts and no proposed zoning district will receive favorable recommendation unless, A, the proposal will place all property similarly situated in the area in the same category in or in appropriate complementary categories. All in agreement? B, there is convincing demonstration that all uses permitted under the proposed district classification would be in the general public interest and not merely in the interest of the individual or small group. All in agreement? There is convincing demonstration that the character of the neighborhood will not be materially or adversely affected by any use permitted in the proposed change. All in agreement? The proposed change is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and sound planning practices. All in agreement? Sean, that's unanimous.
Can we do one formal motion and vote?
Sure, I may have a motion to approve this to go to the commissioners. With the set conditions, yes. Robert makes the motion, all in favor? Unanimous. It's granted for rezoning to go to the commissioners.
Okay, September 6th, public hearing, right back here. Okay, item B, under new business on your agenda tonight, we have another rezoning request. This one comes to us, Mr. Chris McKinney is your applicant, Ms. Rebecca Parton is the property owner. Located on Matthew Mill Pond Road, there's a vicinity map on the screen and on page one of your staff report. This red arrow right here indicates there are two parcels here totaling just over 32 acres currently zoned RA 30. And once again, the requested zoning district is conditional R6. Do want to point out before we go any further, you'll recall the Dupree Farms tract directly to the east that was just approved by the commissioners. It will have a stub street to this project. In other words, the Matthew Mill Pond project will have vehicle connection and pedestrian connection through Dupree Farms back out to Tippert Road in addition to their Matthew Mill Pond Road entrance. Page two, zoning compatibility chart. If you could scroll up a little bit. There we go. As you can see, the parcels in question are RA 30. Most of the parcels surrounding it in the area are also RA 30. I drew this CZR6 box over Dupree Farms because it's so new, it hasn't been added to GIS yet here and here. But pictured these as already zoned CZR6, which is the requested district here tonight. Highlighted in the permitted use table, there's a P in the multifamily box. That is because the applicant has proposed exclusively duplex and townhome units on this 32-acre tract. The total unit count is 87. Okay. 87 total units on 32.23 acres comes to 2.69 units an acre. Okay, so even though these are duplexes and townhomes, different from the single-family product on the previous rezoning, this is actually a less dense project. Physical characteristics, you can see on the aerial map here, there is a large existing pond on the 32 acres in question. We have some road frontage on Matthew Mill Pond Road. I mentioned the stub street to Dupree Farms to the east. Surrounding land uses include some medium-density residential, i.e. Dupree Farms. Professional services over here on the other side, that is Ken's Muffler, for those of you familiar with Matthew Mill Pond Road across the street here. Couple existing residents just to the northern corner. There's also some commercial right on Highway 210 on the other side of Matthew Mill Pond. There will be Town of Andrew water and sewer provided to serve the development upon approval. The Dupree Farms engineering team has been designing Dupree Farms so it will have water and sewer stubs towards this Matthew Mill Pond project. Land use compatibility, as we always look at on page three of your staff report, you'll see the two red arrows pointing to the parcels in question. That dark yellow is our medium-density residential land use classification. Here's Matthew Mill Pond Road for reference. This dashed blue and black line right here intersecting with Highway 210, that's the Highway 55 bypass, which is in the near vicinity here, further down Matthew Mill Pond. As I mentioned, just shy of 2.7 units an acre overall, which does align with our medium-density residential classification on the zoning map. I'm not going to read through the evaluation line by line because we've already heard it tonight. But staff does have a favorable recommendation for each of the evaluation criteria and therefore a favorable approval recommendation of this conditional R6 district with the condition sheet provided. sheet provided. This one is a little bit different than the previous submittal, so I am going to read through all 12 of the conditions on that condition sheet. Can you pull up the subdivision map for this one? I'll talk us through the map before we read these conditions here. The yellow boxes on the subdivision plan before you, those are the duplex areas, the proposed subdivision. The purple closer to Matthew Mill Pond Road, that is the townhome section. As we know that if you propose 20 or more multi-family townhome structures, units, excuse me, you have to get a special use permit so this developer is staying under that 20 threshold. These gray lines here represent the proposed streets, and that is the street stub towards the Dupree Farms project that I mentioned earlier to the property to the east. And there's your entrance on Matthew Mill Pond Road here. There's the existing pond, that big blue circle here with the brown line around it being the proposed walking trails. That brown line that kind of bisects the property north to south, that's an existing Duke Energy Power easement. So the developer will have street crossings that will need to be approved by Duke through that easement. He's also proposed some walking trails north to south along that easement line as well. Okay, conditions list. Number one says the parcels in question shall only be developed with duplex and townhome residential lots. Number two, there should be no more than 87 total units on the parcels in question. As we know, staff can reduce that number. Number three, there should be no more than 19 lots developed for townhomes. Number four, all duplex lots shall be greater than or equal to 12,000 square feet. And number five, all townhome lots shall be at least 2,500 square feet. Number six, minimum building setbacks shall be as required in R6. Number seven, there should be a minimum of 11 acres of total open space dedicated, of which nine acres shall be active recreational. Number eight, there should be a 10-foot type C landscape buffer along Matthew Mill Pond Road. And number nine, a 15-foot type A landscape buffer installed along the sides and the rear of the proposed townhome units. And those are standard ordinance requirements. Number 10, there should be curb gutter and 5-foot sidewalk throughout the proposed subdivisions on both sides of each proposed street. And also along the frontage along Matthew Mill Pond Road. So I mentioned that those sidewalks will also connect to Dupree Farms to the east here. Number 11, all lots proposed adjacent to parcels which are occupied by residential dwellings as of the date this conditions list was drafted, shall include a type A 15-foot landscape buffer. So just like we've done in previous conditional rezonings, we're going to protect those existing residences with a 15-foot wide landscape buffer along their shared property line. And number 12, once again, developers shall incorporate crepe myrtles into the landscaped area near the entrance on Matthew Mill Pond Road. Everybody understand the subdivision plan before them in the list of 12 conditions? Any questions, any conditions that might need to be added? Yes, I did. That's a very important one. Just, just ran this by the applicant before the meeting started. He did confirm that the intended builder will make this a, an exclusive 55-year-old plus community. So with his agreement and the agreement by the commissioners at their public hearing, we will add that as condition number 13 on this conditions list. And what staff will do if approved, we will have the developer provide evidence in their HOA covenants that there will be some age restrictions actually recorded when we get to that point.
So does that mean that there will be no children in this development?
HOA is, is always required to maintain the, the common open space. Yeah. Personal property maintenance?
Yeah.
You know anything about that?
Is it going to be?
All-inclusive, okay. I don't believe we've got that far.
Sean, you said that, that one street there, that's going to be going existing into the Dupree Farms development, right? And will the, so there will be a public hearing concerning all of that as well? I'm just wondering with, you know, the Dupree Farms, the people that came, that were not so, you know, in favor of what was going on, I'm hoping that, you know, we're not going to have, or that's going to have an opportunity for them to come and speak and, you know.
Yep, yep. September 6th will be the public hearing for this rezoning.
Because I would, I would, just, you know, thinking that you're saying that this is a 55 and over community, but you're plugging into a neighborhood that's going to be family and, you know, young couples, you're talking two communities together and I'm just wondering how that's going to mesh.
Okay, sure.
Somewhere down the road, it's, it's not really going to be so exclusive. I mean, it's going to be exclusive to how they live, but the two communicate, you know, together. I don't know. It's a, I'm sorry, I mean, it's a nice idea, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just a little in, in quandary about the, the townhomes and, and being, you know, meshed in, but I mean, the layout looks great. But that's not for us to.
Number 11. It says that if there's already a residential dwelling, you have to do that buffer. Is right here where these, I don't know if I'll be able to explain it, but here, there are not residential dwellings yet.
Nope.
But there will be, so.
There's no buffer required between single-family and duplex.
Until, yeah. Because that's going to be a future.
To what you were saying, you know, you have these elderly couples who are going to be, or elderly singles, you know, living here, I don't know that they want to hear the family parties that might be happening right behind them. I would ask for some type of buffer to be there too, and maybe just treat it like they're already there.
Right.
Maybe add that type A buffer.
Yeah, because you've got that little town.
Right.
A little townhome just down there, that corner right there.
Well, this is duplex.
Or one.
Yeah, these are duplex. But still, they're.
You still got it there, but there's the future. Like you just said, the future.
Because we know these are going to be homes. So I feel like we should treat them like they're already there.
Yeah, because they've already got the, you can see the drawn.
Correct. These would be town streets that, that tie into each other, just, just like anywhere else in town.
The open space here, like if this was switched and the open space was on the side, but right here where this duplex, yeah, I feel like we should, we need to add that.
So, so adjacent to lots 16 through 20.
Those are tiny numbers.
I swear that's an H.
Those aren't even numbers. Oh yeah, 11, I can see the 20.
The right thigh. That's H.
Even the one that's, so on those three. Yeah, we're talking about this one here. This one right here. Yeah. There's one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, so to affect these five duplexes is this.
Yes, yes, those, those 15-foot type A buffers will be adjacent to the rear of lots 16 through 20 right here from the edge of this open space green area down to the southern boundary where the open space starts down here where the walking trail is. I mean, if I'm hearing you clearly, we want that 15-foot buffer to continue from open space to open space without leaving a gap.
Right.
We can add that as condition 13.
Do we have a turn lane going into the development from Matthew, Matthews Mill Pond Road?
No, there is no turn lanes required. 87 units is not going to give you the traffic council, they're going to trigger the full traffic impact analysis. So this one was not studied by, by a traffic engineer. And also, if you drive down Matthew Mill Pond Road, you know, it's not more than a couple thousand cars a day. There will be along this frontage.
But not, oh.
Not existing.
So there is going to be buffer though along Matthews Mill Pond, correct? Or no?
That's right, your standard 10-foot street skate buffer.
Okay, we're just seeing it not drawn in.
That's where we'll have some crepe myrtles will be there.
Okay, awesome.
There's no connection of Matthew Mill Pond to the bypass, right? Matthew Mill Pond's a good a dead end just past.
All right.
Right up to 210, right in town, the back way.
So what is to, um, keep traffic, I'm just, you know, cutting through just to get through to, to Dupree Farms?
That's the whole point. We want connectivity, we want traffic to have multiple options to disperse instead of funnel to one entry.
Exactly, that, that, everybody's got a way to get home and get out. Awesome. Yeah, you. Yeah, you, because that's going to be important. All right, so without reading every single A, B, C, D, is anyone opposed to any one of those four? So we're just all going to go with the agreement on that granting the rezoning request. May I have a motion to let it go? Courtney? With the, with, with the additional conditional zoning in there? All right, Courtney's made the motion, all in agreement, say aye, raise your hand and very good. It goes to the commissioners.
September 6th, public hearing.
Thank you much, thank you. And we have no old business, so with that, meeting is adjourned.